Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in the name of our individual liberty and justice for all.
To start, I am Senator from Eastern Panhandle and home with the House out to my right. We serve as chair of the House Senate District Committee. I want to first thank everybody who turned out tonight, who looks like a great turnout. And here this is Thorc, we're building perhaps West Virginia's roof, so we're built in the entire building. I will begin by introducing for the folks who are here, my colleagues from the West Virginia Senate, and then going to the store for you, they'll just go introduce the members of the House of Democrats who are here, we've got three turn out members who are here. To my left, Senator is Senator Peter, don't know how to do it, I want you to stand up, sir.
That's the way you go back and stand up, you know.
Senator, Senator Peter, Senator, he goes over the District Committee, my district is, what is it, thirteen, you have the counties, Montoya and Mary. Mike Holman is from here, Cleveland. Senator Clemens, where is your vote, Clemens? It's here somewhere. Hi, Senator Clemens represents the second Senate District and represents actually half the counties in West Virginia, those are eight counties, the counties, the Nader, nine counties, Old Yon River, in Italy, Marshall, Wessel, Coward, Dogruch, you have Calhoun, Bill, Xerian, Washington County, Senator Ferns, we have two here tonight. I want to save our two host senators last, but before we get to the two host senators, we have two senators here tonight on the opposite side of the table, and I'll add Senator Quinn Chap, who's been up there in the county tonight. Senator Chap serves in the eighth Senate District, which includes five of the counties. And to my right, at this point, Senator Terry, and Senator Tar is also likely from part of the county, but in a different district, this is four, and that includes counties of Butler, Mason, Jackson, and then we have here with us, I'm going to see now, our two host senators. First, one of us, Brian, well, if I hear, Brian stays up, he probably needs no introduction. One is one of the two senators elected in the first Senate District, and the other is Bill Hill, all the way to the back, and so Bill is the other senator elected here in the first Senate District. Bill is actually from Ohio County, this is his home county, the resident representative of Ohio County, Senator Hill, but it's Holman's birthday, and as has been our tradition, it's under common appearance, if I would like either of those senators to say anything you like in my way of welcoming or welcoming.
This is one of the larger crowds that I've seen and that you can make some passion, it's great to have those subjects here in the first district, thank you all for coming out.
Welcome, sir. Welcome to winning, everybody. And I'm sure everybody knows this, but I'm going to mention since he's here, and we're proud of having certain with Bill in the Senate, we've been missing, but he has been called by the President of the United States, and not only, it's not a secret, I don't know, it's not a secret. Bill is one of the, uh, one of the United States, served as the United States attorney for the Northern District of West Virginia. Again, he served in that office with Simpson in prior administration, and as soon as the United States Senate finishes its work of confirming, Senator Riddlefeld's nomination of Florida, we're all going to miss him, but we know that he's going to be running a great full service in the United States. So Bill, that was, and really meaningful to this, congratulations to you. Thank you. All right, now I'm going to turn this rest over to the, to the, she's put up, Becky introduced the House members right here, who are Becky and Pete, somebody from the House, we're alone.
Becky, Senator, um, you can give everyone a pat, Senator, my name is Jennifer Thorpe, I serve for the third district in the House, one of two, I'll get into the second one, continue. Um, one of the areas where fellow House colleagues currently here in the room with us, I'll start with Speaker Roger Meehan Shaw, the speakers from Oklahoma City, I'm glad to have him in the meeting, all of us have been voted on. And then as the senator said, you know, it's Delia Dearie-Cow, who's been on the House side of the committee, I'm not a member of the district, and I'm voting for the county because well, so there's myself, I didn't realize that, so just going to see what I need. Maybe a little bit of the South, we have like Charlie Rattles. He is not a member of the, and Delia is a big girl. And Mark, kind of a little more, and all they need is Delia, and Delia, and Delia Ball, and Delia, and my working leader from the House side is Delia, and Delia, for that too. Delia, who is area, who's not on the committee, and we have former related state evidence, and former Delia, who is the commissioner, and my co-potter, I think in the House, who is the legislature officer. I'm going to turn it up, everybody, Senator.
All right, well, listen, I, you first of all, say, yeah, welcome everybody, thanks for those of you who turned out, let's just say, this is as good a turnout as we've seen, and I think we're all excited, there's this much interest in the socket, and it says a great deal about you, and you sit behind this, and you turn it out, just say a few basic things as we start. Under the West Virginia Constitution, every year of the Congress, and if the Senate offense is in the United States, legislature is required by Constitution to redraw the second district score, which the elders are likely to the West Virginia House of Democrats, senators are likely to the West Virginia Senate, and US Congressmen are likely to the United States House of Representatives. And so this, a week, a week or two ago, United States Census Bureau released today, we could have all the years for a month of this, around West Virginia, we've been doing it without them, had a single, you know, carry by candidate, we have that, we are fast approaching the time, we can start drawing maps, posting maps, and listening to public comment, actual maps, which we will be open to. But our purpose here tonight is the same as it's been in other places, we want to hear what the citizens of this here, Ohio County and the surrounding counties want to tell us, we want to hear what you have to say, about the way you want your districts to be drawn, for all those offices, city houses, Senate, US House of Representatives, who are suit cameras, so we are archived, we're going to be recording the comments, the statements that get us, because of the members of the legislature who've been here tonight, who want to hear, we have to say, and it's critically important for us, before we draw any districts, to know how we approach people, so, well, thank you, everybody who's turned out, we only have five or six who signed up to speak, and so we have a rule, we're allowed, when we have fewer candidates, Eric and I just picked about the ready, and they go, so, okay. So here's what we're going to do, those who signed up to speak, maybe you're in books of those comments, the people who feel inspired to say something, they did sign up, and it looks like they had time for comment, where we have speakers come, we have the market set, so, uh, Kelly, Kelly, so, so I ask you to speak in the light, and that is just so that our archive, that works will look, you can kind of video or audio reports, maybe the comments that you make, and there's a timer that's going to blow, what we want to do is, so if we red light goes on, that's five minutes, and we ask you to five minutes to tell your remarks, and we will speak more than that speed. All right, the first person to sign up to speak is Mary Ellen Kasten.
Good evening, um, I'm a woman, I'm asking a form of suggestions, some of these things you may have already incorporated into your plan, but I'm including it anyway, I'm not sure what else you can get into the process or plan. First, I would like to suggest for transparency through this process, that you will host on the West Virginia Legislature site, the raw data that you're using, including the census numbers, which you all can read accessible, they would publish the current forms, algorithms, and decision-making factors you're using for this redistricting program, that you would publish the names of anyone involved in the decision-making, including hopefully statisticians and advisors, a couple of reasons, so that we can follow what's going on, and also I think it'd be interesting to have some of our universities bringing professors and their students in during the project, and follow how you do redistricting, and how these members work, and how that leads into politics and sociology, just a suggestion. Second, I might also just see published ones included in your current plans, to include everyday life civilian people, for instance, perhaps the formation of a nonpartisan civil servant approach, where maps are drawn by nonpartisan bodies of citizens, that includes specialized expertise and representative formulations, and would be included in your consideration of redistricting maps. I'd also like to see included a prioritized and stated criteria that you're going to use for this redistricting, so that we feel, in short, but short, that it will be fair, unbiased, and you're using tested methods, programs, technology, that reflect truly the priorities and the values of the people of West Virginia. I would like to see the map, the visuality of the map and the context of the map, including continuity, consistency with natural and political boundaries, compactness that expresses low criteria to early visions. I'm wondering if you could identify and post this maybe with the rest of this information, the algorithm or program you're using in this redistricting. There's one that was brought up a few weeks ago called the line combined process of redistricting, and it was developed by researchers at Harvard and Boston University, an updated system. It's a fairly simple method, but it employs all the data and the methods that most people would want to see reflected in a very distant program. And I asked a suggestion that, and this might already be enforced, that either people of West Virginia to see the redistricting map that you intend to adapt, before you actually mapped it, and give us time to look at it and figure it out and come. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, your remarks and your shit. The next person to sign up to speak is Ken Fox, Representative.
Yeah, yes, pretty big, I'm Ken Fox, I'm from, on a daily account, eighty, but when you were working down, even half ago, I was out of town. I'm here only here tonight mostly to say that I really don't like our multi-member district, I guess maybe I depend, because I have five delegates, but I really would have just got one delegate, who lives in the same part of the county, and that's, that's why I came here tonight. The only other thing that I'd like to mention from the state, when you're districting, is the congressional district. That's the hard one, I'm sure you've given lots of advice, there's lots of people in West Virginia, I'm not going to offer any of that, but I would suggest that you draw that line first, because the, the plan is to congressional office be known as soon as possible, and, you know, that puts the state into two equally sized pieces of the population wise, and after you've drawn that line, then put the legislative districts on evenly on both sides of it, and show our congressional representatives that the legislature itself is willing to live the same line, and do it for them. Thank you.
So I thank you very much. The next person to sign up to speak is Wes Perry, who's very familiar.
Hi, I'm Wes Perry, I think when it comes to redistricting, our, our byword needs to be balance, and I'm speaking mainly with the congressional districts, the US congressional districts is, we're losing one, we're going to go to two, and we need to look at balance, that, that should be the key word at every decision we make, I think, if you look at the why we're drawing two instead of three, we've lost population, but there's a couple areas in this state that gain population, and that's the non-BD, the non-BD like county, and Eastern Panhandle, so in my mind, if we're drawing two districts, those two population growth areas should be in separate districts, if you put them all in one, ten years from now, we're going to be back here doing the same thing on a bigger scale, if we have one district that's grown and the other district it hasn't. And coincidentally, if you talk about economic balance, the north central part of the state is got some economic vitality, it's pretty strong, Eastern Panhandle has an economic vitality that's also pretty strong, so if we look at keeping those two areas in different congressional districts, I think we strike a balance between the two districts that better represents our state, this is about all I got.
Very, thank you very much, thank you for your comments and thoughts. The next person to sign up to speak is Thorc.
My name's Thorc Cooper, I'm from South Charleston, West Virginia, missed one of these meetings, I went to all of those ten years ago, I've been involved in redistricting at the eighth census, the ninth census, the two thousand census, the two thousand tenth census, and here I am again. There were challenges to the congressional redistricting, the state senate redistricting, and the House of Democrats redistricting, ten years ago, I was a party in all of those cases, I didn't really play legislation in any of it, so I'm here, like, I'm honored to be in this facility, because one of the things I ought to do is, before they had the internet, was go up to the state law library and read the debates of the West Virginia Constitutional Convention, which took place, as I understand it, in this particular building, and so if you get about one hundred and sixty years, you will see, now, one thing is, people found respect for races, so they didn't include black people, they only included white people, what they, they, they couldn't, but aside from that, maybe, they, they really did the white, you know, when they bounced, so, first central district, Annapolis, Oregon, Ohio, thirty-two oh six-three, and then the second, Marshall, Wessel, Marion, thirty-two two-eight-three, Montoya, Preston, Taylor, three-three-three-nine-oh, so that, the, the population of the whole state whites, forty-four counties, is three-hundred-four, four-three-three, the average for each district was three-three-eight-five, they were very serious, they, they were very close in America, and then it went way down the tubes over the next, the next hundred years, where you had, Connaught County, Riley, they had two hundred thousand people, but only one, you know, like two senators, so, thank goodness, Senator, for this mandate, one person, one vote, I, I already submitted today, and I'm working on the state senate thing, and I'm going to point out, when I challenged the state senate redistricting ten years ago, there were three districts I thought were worse, and one of them I call the bicycle district, that's the district two, which kind of battles, sort of, right below the mill, all the way down, it is not compact, and so I come up with a plan which will take care of it, which will put all Marion, and all Wessel, and all Tyler, and the lower part of Marshall together, and it will be almost exactly one-seventeen for the population. The other two counties, the other two districts are the Rattles Lake District, which is District six, which I think everybody knows, a Jerry Man, and what I call the necktie district, which goes from Harrison County down to Play County, Play County, it's like the tip, the necktie, Harrison County, it's like the, the, sorry, top, so, anyway, I already come up with a congressional district plan, I worked it out today after the census results came in, got a little lap rather, because I told Senator Trump, if you want beauty, that's one thing, if you want equality, that's another thing, one of the principles of this is not what is pretty, it's where it's close to equality, and so, my congressional back number one, which I already emailed to the head chair, twenty, two thousand twenty population, eight-nine-six, eight-eight-two, congressional district number two, two thousand twenty population, eight-nine-six, eight-three-four, so from numerical perfection, it's only twenty-four to the east direction, I challenge everybody in the state to come up with a plan that's closer to mine, and if they can, and it's, but the way I did it, it is based on this, it's not based on which con, member congress you want to get rid of, I don't want that affair, I have no dog in that fight, when I do plans, it's based on compact, so even before the, the official census results came out, I, when they had, it's the unofficial results, they found the counties that were closest to the place where Kentucky, Virginia, and West Virginia meet, which is near Ward for the Flamingo County, then I also found the, the counties that were closest to where Pennsylway, Maryland, and West Virginia meet, and that's Hazleton, the Preston County, and so I came up with basically a base fund of about eight-hundred, two thousand each, and then everything else was kind of a mess, so what happened was, I don't, without even getting to the, the ones outside, you had Mason, Buckland, Campbell, and all, they had, and then, once I got the final results, I said, well, now I got to own that, so seeing the big, the only county that was not on I-64 was Greenburg, so I had Greenburg, then, then there were two counties that didn't, that weren't on I-77, so I included Jackson and Wood, so then, I'm still shy of sixteen thousand people, so then, it was doing what, the ones that were closest, and the closest were Webster and Ridge together, and that's how I got the number, again, it's not what's printing, it's what's closest, it's has to be compact, it's not the one's most compact, it's the one that's nearest to math enough to equal, that's the principle, so my main ass, witness plan.
And I thank you, I already see the email, can you finish for, I mean, cut it off? No, I, I flipped the red light on, so, so, probably now's a good time to say this, this was submitted by Mr. Cooper, we received it electronically yesterday, we're going to post it to the website, this will address one of the things that Kasten's talking about, and I think we have one of those drive home brochures, or, 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 if anybody didn't get one of these when we came in, please, in here is one, email us for the district, the link, and the website, and so if you have, if you'd like to comment, or suggestions, after the meeting, or if you know people who have comments or suggestions and ideas who aren't at this meeting, that, for sure, will give you the address, email us, and website, where those can be submitted, if we have the capability, we're going to do it, the pay submissions like that, as Mr. Cooper has been, trying out to spend a bunch of time on it, and, 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 we're going to let people look at it, and, you know, I'm hoping that we get lots of posts, and, 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 and people on this website, that other people, public, and legislators, they'll look at, and maybe people from the public will comment around those, and why, that's the sort of thing that's going to be really helpful to us, when we actually start trying to draw them, so, that for sure, if you need to get one, please do, and please feel free to use it to send us any, those are thoughts or suggestions that you have. Okay, next speaker is Owen Brandt, here we go, for you.
Yes, I'm a State President of West Virginia, NWC, uh, we come up with our plan as to how congressional districts should be divided up, Dr. Phil Carter, he are higher education, chairperson of NWC, he's also professor at Marshall University, and he divided the state up north and south, beginning at the border, the border of Jackson County would be the starting point, going to the northern border of Rome, northern border of Raxton, Western, Pendleton, and Grand, uh, he looked at the numbers of population, maybe it's now, I think, some tweaking, that it could be made to work based on population, and I think it's important to also have cultural continuity when you draw when you draw up your districts, your congressional districts. The northern Panhandle is more culturally in line with the eastern Panhandle and Montegoat County. Also, we have continuity also in economic within the sphere areas congressional districts. And I think that would be fair play. Also, it's also with minorities in these areas that are pretty equally in the north and the south. There's heavy population of minorities in the southern part of the state, heavy population of minorities in the eastern Panhandle coming this way. So that's what we hope to happen with congressional districts because we feel weird laws being represented as a group in the state because of the way the lines have been drawn and how the districts, congressional districts have been divided up. A second point is on the goal of redistricting. We believe that a city or a willing Ohio county should remain with two delegates because it's one of the heavily populated cities in the state of West Virginia. And what has happened in the past, there used to be three delegates at the time. I remember how they divided it up and actually removed a delegate out of this county and we actually played a game and actually got rid of a delegate when it was divided up most before. But these are the things that I hope will happen. I hope you take it serious, not just at the numbers, but also cultural continuity that when you draw up a congressional district, also the economic continuity. Here is our map that we did draw up that you can submit online. Now, thank you for your sharing.
Mr. Brown, thank you very much for your comments and suggestions. And thank you for the map. We have, and our staff will, I promise you, figure out a way to scan this and post it to our website so that everybody who's interested in the circuit can scan it. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Brown was actually the last person to sign up to speak. So Eric Forrester, don't you recall? Now, I will say this, sometimes the list is pulled away before everybody realizes there's a list against the time. We have comments, we have the awful, if there's anybody else who basically comments that have been made, would like to join in and say an order or two of suggestions. Yes, Eric, please come over to the mic, please, and tell us your name. Margaret Brennan. Don't have to ask your name. Remember, as long as people can take, but go ahead, problems can say your own.
My name is Margaret Brennan. I'm a local historian. Being known may not be the best thing, really.
It's wonderful.
But I appreciate. I guess I just wanted to say a few things because I don't know beans about redistricting. And that's why I came tonight is to learn. And I want to thank you all that are here, that are on this committee. Because I can't imagine how hard it must be to do what you have to do and not get oxygen or, you know. So I guess I would say in a political climate, and I don't know who was in power 10 years ago, but I would hope that you will be as just, as fair, and equitable, and wise as you could possibly be for our state. And I know some of the delegates and the senators, and I think so very highly of them. So I have great faith in you. I don't know if Chairman Trump, he could explain a little bit about moving forward, how this all will unfold in terms of educating me and others, or maybe that's not appropriate. But I do thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brennan. I couldn't say a little, which is what I've got, a little. We have a debate. And so what we're going to do is we're going to complete our public hearing process. Later this week, we're going to be in front of them. We have public hearings to be held. We've got Austin, Parker, and we had, I guess this is the late, perhaps. We've been a little bit, and we've had Mark's work, and Tom's work. We're going to do a few others. And then we're going to try to do some digital public events. Because there are people that didn't get, here today or to one of the others, use some Teams platform or Zoom platform. May I allow people in the parts of the state maybe who could get to one of these meetings who want to tell us and make suggestions. The last I heard from the president of Senate, he, his thinking was, his belief was, that it will probably be in the middle of October when we get to the short hang session that is going to be the last redistricting. In front of the processes that we, when we pick a redistricting, we pick a match. But really, it was also a match, but it's legislation that works in many ways just like every other bill, a bill that defines districts. It has to pass those houses, and it looks like it's going to be on the board. And we sign it into law. So in that sense, it's the process is similar to a regular bill. It's considered by the legislature. If you haven't thought of it, it's something to be drawn into the map. I don't know, it's a speaker, I wouldn't need to put you on the spot, but it is a pronunciation I got from President Blair in October. Is that important?
I was limited to the base. So we currently have lockdown October 10, 11, and 12 days of that short hang session.
Okay. So there you go. And of course, that can change and the pandemic will be the world, we'll know. We had, we had a most unusual winter session this year because of the pandemic. None of us at the hot site could have employed it, it, the way it ended up. So we don't want to have it. We want to have a hot schedule for this reason. There's a little bit of delay this year, probably due to the pandemic. And the census bureau releasing, the may, we now have, this month, nominates the least for the state senate paper of the year from the census. We, the one that says this, and I don't know, the whole, see, out of members of the legislature, both houses, is lots of people who run lots of their maps and host them for our website so the public can look at them, the legislators can look at them, for everybody to look at them. You know, Jarrett's gonna be hosting. Thank you. This applies to those any, any project, a legislature act. Do you bet? The more we have, the more people watching and looking at what the bill is being made. Give us heat. I forgot my speakers, everybody who's here in front of the legislature. And I say that it's really important, and I can, and we'll break it. We want, we want to tell the government fundamentally, the state government, you. You are the state government. People are the sovereign power in this state. And we want, and we need, for you to tell us how you think this government, all the structure, bill, district, and all that. Is everybody else here when they come to the line, can I say something? It's happened so now some people get to feel the spirit of the course. And please tell us your name and Forrester.
And thank you. My name is Dolph Stanford, and I live here in Ohio County. I guess most of us don't think that the results will be any really different, any different in the redistricting than they were the last five or six go rounds with this. Maybe a slightly different slant. But the thing I am going to ask for, not only the transparency that you mentioned, which is so critical, but I think that with this redistricting and the shift in population, many of the people who are involved in the redistricting will have their seats put at risk. It's going to be different. And this is the time when I hope our elected officials will make that move that is right for the state of West Virginia and not necessarily correct for their reelection. And that's the key. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for those comments and your admission to the ballot. Anybody else? The woman, yeah. Hey, hi, pretty wonderful here, Eric, you're on the block, you don't know anybody else? Welcome, please tell us your name.
My name's, my name's Charlie Chandler from Ohio County. And I hear a lot about computers. I don't want the computers making the decisions as to redistricting. We know what goes in, garbage in, garbage out. Please, please, listen to your constituents. I'm hearing some of the people saying, well, you can go into a computer and it can figure out everything. That's not the way we're founded. And people are people and computers are computers. They have wheelings, they have artificial intelligence. And I don't want our country being run by strictly computers because we know what's happened in the past. Please listen to your constituents, even like Dolph said, even if they're contrary, the decisions you are making are contrary to you having a political position. God is the ultimate judge of what we do in this, on this earth. And you're going to have to ju, I mean, he's going to be your ultimate judge. So please seek his guidance in the decisions that you make. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the thoughtful work. Anyone else? You ready to start? It's not going to have all, so sure enough, thank you so much. I'm not, thank you for caring about this issue. And we are the owners, to the extent that you want us to make a map and send to us a comment when anybody's maps was sent to us, when it comes to, they're all going to be posted. Or I say, we're going to like comment on the public on all of them. And I think this interactive process is going to help us achieve the result. It's good for my team. We have everybody's, thank you.
Yes, sir. If you would, if you would mind, someone here is very special, I think, in the media and in the house and in the senate. The site manager here, all, what's in the senate and the house of ballots. And she was her office just around the corner, I was still in there, yeah. And I think he very contacted.
I think that's, I'm, yeah.
I just don't see you.
The obstinacy of the office, you can hear a little. Oh, there we go. Thank you. The salient suggestion, a download from Gilbert Raxton. This is, we recommend that you, thank you, I'm so glad you're here. Because I know even organizing something like this and a bunch of work, it's not easy. You make it look easy. Thank you very much. And would like you to say a few words in the office to the group.
Well, I, I, I just want to say, you know, thank you for coming here to, you know, work with the state of West Virginia, because it's a better place in this town, anyway. This is very good to see familiar faces that I haven't seen for a while. And, you know, I just hope you'll come back and I can visit, take a tour. This whole city has a lot to offer here in this, in this town. So again, thank you for coming and spending your, your, it's awesome.
Thanks very much. And without a question, we'll let that be your last. Thank you.